Good evening. Here we go. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, May 27, 2025, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the ZOOM video conferencing platform for convenience only. Any disruption with the video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. However, the meeting will continue. Meetings will continue to be broadcast on WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. And on the agenda, there is a link to connect to the Zoom broadcast, and there's also a telephone number you can dial in to listen to the meeting. As you can see, the board has one member here in person, and we are joined by three other members on Zoom. And we will take a call the meeting to order and take a roll call. I, John Trefetham, am present.
I, Brian Forrestall, am present on Zoom.
I, Ryan Sullivan, am present, also on Zoom.
I, Stuart Siegel, am present on Zoom.
Excellent. First item on the agenda is the continuance of a public hearing at 167-169 Pleasant Street, a special permit request. The matter had previously been on May 6 and was continued until this evening. We recently received a request from the applicant that he's not ready for tonight but would like to get on the next meeting after that, which would be June 10. So we have a request to continue the hearing to June 10, 2025. Would someone wish to make a motion to that effect?
So moves.
Is there a second?
I second that move.
Thank you, Stu. I, John Trefetham, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Excellent. Thank you very much, gentlemen. That matter is now concluded for this evening and moving on to the next item, which is the continuance of a public hearing for a Chapter 40B comprehensive permit request at 61 Waverly Street. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will reopen the public hearing to hear the petition from the Gutierrez Company requesting a comprehensive permit for Mass. General laws, Chapter 40B, Sections 20-23, to allow for the development of one multifamily five-story building containing 226 apartment units and 391 parking spaces. The property in question is located at 61 Waverly Street, Assessors Map 15, Lot 12, in the Ashland WMUSD (D) Wildwood Mixed Use Special District D zoning. We previously held a public hearing on this matter on March 25 of 2025, and the matter was continued to this evening, where we were planning to entertain discussion on traffic as well as beginning the civil engineering discussion. However, the documents submitted by the applicant, they submitted a response to our traffic peer reviews comments, and the response to our civil engineering peer reviewer came in late last week and given the public holiday yesterday, the long weekend, our engineer didn't have adequate time to analyze and prepare a response. So tonight, we are going to be dealing just with traffic. And I think perhaps the best order to start would be to ask the applicant to come forward and perhaps provide a little bit of oversight about what they submitted, and the applicant is walking in the room right now. We'll give you a chance to sit down and unpack your bag. How's that? Take your time. The first item was a continuance, so we moved speedily through that.
Guess I shouldn't have been chit-chatting downstairs in the lobby.
Well, no, you didn't need to confess that, but while we're waiting, let me introduce who else is sitting at the table with us. We have Rob DiBenedetto and Robert Micho, our two peer reviewers. Bob is for traffic, and Rob is from the firm. That's the peer reviewer for our civil engineering. And we also are joined this evening by Brian Winner from our town council law firm, as well as always by our assistant town planner, Alvaro Espada. And that being said, if you're ready, we can start. We had just explained about the process and that you'd had submitted some traffic response to our peer review on traffic and also response on the engineering. Civil inch side of it came in late last week, and the civil engineer didn't have an opportunity over the week, holiday weekend, to prepare a written response in time for tonight's meeting. So we thought we would just proceed with traffic this evening. And although we don't have a written report from our peer reviewer on traffic, I think he's prepared to perhaps orally address some of the issues from the response. So we thought it might be a good idea to start with you giving us a summary of your traffic engineer's response to our peer reviewer's initial review.
Sure. So, good evening. For the record, I'm Israel Lopez with the Gutierrez Company, and we are prepared to review the traffic, the comments that we received from MDM with respect to traffic. Our traffic engineer is here this evening, Max Polanco with Langen Engineering, and we are happy to do a presentation to provide an overview of those responses, or we're happy to also turn it over to the traffic consultant to ask any questions.
I think it would be helpful if you could provide a brief overview of what your response is, and then we'll have Mr. Micho give us his thoughts.
Sounds good. That's perfect. Yep, and I'm going to turn it over to Maximo.
Good evening. For the record, Maximo Polanco with Langen Engineering. So I think for the purposes of discussing in general, I'm just going to open here, kind of like a site plan. And briefly, the main discussions of the review was that we have, basically, our main access was through Union Street.
Yep.
Which was to the south side of the proper plan view here. And obviously, with the amount of traffic that was coming due to the school, it was recommending the evaluation to have additional access onto Waverly Street. So there was a couple of main things why we initially didn't do that from the beginning, and there's some site distance constraints on the site. So on Union Street, we have a crest curve here that limits the distance. I don't know if you guys have driven to that area there, but that's the main reason why the school driveways, there are ingress and egress only because there's a curve here in this area that limits the visibility here. So this is the location that perfectly aligns and that provides visibility for us going in and out. So this one, we have maintained the driveway at this exact location where we have from the beginning with the differences that, as recommended by the peer reviewers, that we have relocated the crosswalk to be on the other side as recommended. But in addition to that, we have revised the Waverly connection to be egress, but as a right turn only. And the main reason for that, and I will try to zoom in here a little bit, here, right? If you guys see here, this is a ledge that is here on this area here. And due to this ledge here, the silents are limited, and that's one of the main reasons why we didn't want to have a egress condition at this location. So now we have revised the site plan to have an egress location, but additional to that, we have proposed some traffic calming measures with our dynamic speed signage so that people can reduce the speed at this location and allow people to exit and have safe gaps to exit the site. So this will allow people to exit the site and reduce speeds on the road. When we measured speeds on this road on Waverly Street, which is a principal arterial, people were traveling at 37 miles per hour. So with our condition of the speed signage that we are proposing to install at the cost of the applicant, it's proposing to be at 30 miles per hour at a speed signage, I would say, dynamic speed signage. And this is mainly to encourage people to slow down as they are going through this stretch of the road. Then mainly the other comments, these are mainly the comments that are regarding for the site plan. The other comments that were from the reviewer were to add additional intersection at Fountain Street and model that with the condition that it was going to be coordinated. We have done that. We collected data at Fountain Street. We've also collected, again, data at Waverly and Union Street because we had collected data in January, and he wanted us to confirm that data from January was adequate due to the seasonality of January and April wasn't. So we wanted to make sure. The other thing that he wanted us to include is other committed developments that were in the area, even though we did a growth of 1%, which from our growth represents 11%. The committed developments that have been approved in the area account for approximately 5%. We did a very conservative analysis that we grew the traffic, that 1% each year, and added the committed developments in the area. So it's basically overestimating the traffic that is expected with this development. And with all of this, we demonstrated that the traffic works for the area with this project. Obviously, we redistributed the traffic to show the expected conditions now that the distribution of traffic is going to be different because of the lane configurations and the driveway and the access is going to be different. So we've revised the entire traffic study to show all of those conditions and address all the comments that we've received. If you guys have any other comments, we're here to address them all and have a brief discussion.
Thank you. Bob, why don't we call upon you to give us your initial response? I know you don't have a written report available as yet, but your initial thoughts?
Sure. Thank you, Chair and Board members. Again, for the record, Robert Micho, Managing Principal of MDM Transportation Consultants based in Marlboro. I'll ask Alvaro to put up the slide deck, and I'll just recap some of the key points that we've identified in the review of the more recently submitted material. As a caveat, you know, we received that material late last Monday, right? So we've only had a few days to look at the material. We've conducted the technical review that's necessary. We flagged a series of issues that we'll be discussing with the applicant and the engineer in the coming days. So what I'm going to be doing tonight is really just a verbal overview of what some of the more significant remaining concerns are.
Understood.
Yeah. So we'll start with, and there are essentially five aspects of the review that I'll cover. The first is the updated traffic impact assessment that Mr. Polanco just described. It, in fact, addresses many of the comments that we've issued. As Max indicated, there's an expanded study area that now includes Union and Fountain Street. That's important because the signal at East Union Street will be coordinated in operation with that location. There have been updates to background growth assumptions, seasonal adjustments, trip assignment, revised capacity analysis, and updated crash analysis. All of those are well documented in the applicant's response. We find those responses to be acceptable, and they, in combination, present a reasonable basis to understand the impact of the project. So I don't need to go into a lot more detail than that. The second point really relates to the site plan itself. And again, the updated site plan addresses many of the issues that we've identified. As I'll describe in a moment, there's been a swept path analysis, for instance, that confirms that the onsite circulation is adequate for the various emergency responding vehicles, service-type vehicles that may need to access and circulate within the property. There are now identified loading or, God bless you, load-in, move-in zones that allow for move-in activity to occur without unintentionally impeding onsite circulation. Various aspects of sight lines are now documented on the site plans. Specific location of bicycle accommodations, bike racks where those are located are now on the plans. Pedestrian crossing locations are designed to be ADA compliant, and there have been some revisions to the driveway layout. That last point is really the primary focus of our commentary. So point three is described as alternative access design for both Waverly Street and East Union Street. The two points to make here, starting with East Union Street, is that we had suggested that the applicant look at an alternative of shifting the driveway more easterly, to the east of the exit driveway for the high school. The intention of that would be to reduce the amount of traffic that's going to be using that section of East Union Street during school hours in particular to reduce vehicle conflicts. It would be prudent, if possible, to shift the driveway further to the east. The applicant's response is that the crest vertical curves there will not allow for proper visibility sightlines to that location. We've taken a closer look at that. We believe further discussion on that point is necessary, as our own field review and evaluation suggests that applicable sightlines can be met at that location, again, subject to further discussion with the applicant's engineers. The second point relates to the Waverly driveway, which we're pleased to know now includes a right turn exiting capability. We believe that an adjustment to that design, relatively modest adjustment, will further enhance sightlines to a point where the sightlines are a bit better than they are in the current plan. And that may entail, to some degree, clearing up some of the understory and growth and topographic features that are in front of where that ledge outcrop is located. So in the next slide, and we'll cover these last, we'll discuss a little bit about proposed transportation demand management actions and finally a monitoring program for the site. So I'll come back to those in a moment, but what I'd like to do is go to the next slide. And many of these points are already addressed based on the applicant's presentation. This is the site plan that Mr. Polanco just reviewed. It's not at a scale that's going to be easy to see, but this plan now does include all of those features that we had suggested needed to be shown, location of bicycle parking, load-in zones, et cetera. So I don't need to go into too much detail there. The next slide would present the auto turn analysis that was prepared that shows in this particular case swept path movements for a tower vehicle, fire ladder truck, as they would be coming into the site and circulating from the Waverly Street side, and it shows that adequate maneuvering area is, in fact, provided. The next slide is an equivalent representation, but it assumes that the same vehicle would be using the East Union Street driveway, which, again, shows adequate width and areas of maneuvering. And finally, in the third auto turn exhibit, is a smaller responding vehicle that would be more representative of a service-type vehicle, frankly, that might need to circulate within the site, also demonstrating that there's ample maneuvering area. So we're satisfied with the changes that were made in the site plan generally. And what we then focus on is the access. We wanted to revisit two points, and they're shown in green. One, the relocation or potential relocation of the East Union Street driveway further to the east in the area of that green bubble that would coincide with one of the circulation aisles in the parking area that effectively connects more directly to the Waverly Street driveway, which is the upper bubble. The upper bubble, the Waverly driveway, is designed so that it would allocate or restrict left turn movements by way of a very small island feature. We have some suggestions as to how that might be improved, and we've done a more thorough evaluation based on the applicant's grading plans and site review as well that would suggest that the shift to the East Union Street driveway is, in fact, feasible. So the next slide takes a closer look at the Waverly Street driveway. And Alvaro, if you could just really zoom in on the upper part of that graphic, you'll see that in a red dashed outline, we've identified very schematically an alternative design that would minimize the impact to utility features on Waverly Street. In this instance, there's a utility pole that exists along Waverly Street. We've encapsulated that in a small island feature, but we've shifted the location of where vehicles would be exiting the property to get to Waverly Street, most, if not all, of which would be inclined to make a right turn anyway. But under this evaluation, what we're able to demonstrate is that the applicable stopping sight distance and intersection sight distance criteria can be met if the driveway exit point were in that approximate location. So we've taken a look at the rock outcrop along Waverly Street. We've looked at the grades that exist in that area and placed those in context of this alternative driveway location and layout, which does, in fact, meet the applicable sightline criteria. So we're going to have another conversation with the applicant to see if there could be an adjustment to the driveway that would enhance that sightline and better control the entering and exiting movements at that location without having to blast some rock and outcrops and things of that nature. The next slide focuses on the East Union Street driveway. And again, Alvaro, if you can just zoom in on that, we've, again, shown in a very preliminary schematic way potential location of a driveway in the dashed red outline with a vehicle that would be leaving from that position, looking left and right, and vehicles approaching from either the west or the east. We've used the applicant's engineering drawings to develop a profile of East Union Street to determine whether or not stopping sight distance criteria can be met and whether or not intersection sight distance criteria can be met. And if you, Alvaro, just zoom down a little bit down page, you'll see a profile in this example, which shows the stopping sight distance profile that would essentially have a driver's eye position at three and a half feet above grade, looking at an object that is only two feet above grade at the driveway. And we're pleased to say, based on the grades that exist in East Union Street at that particular location, that our evaluation suggests that those criteria can be met. So we would ask for a closer evaluation, a consideration of shifting the driveway on that basis. The next slide down actually presents the same information for intersection sight distance. This would be the driver eye position, someone leaving the driveway, being able to see an oncoming vehicle and make and select an appropriate gap in traffic to make a movement. That, again, based on the profile information that we've developed from the applicant's plan set, indicates that those criteria for ISD can also be met at that location. So for those two reasons, both stopping sight distance and ISD intersection sight distance, we'd ask further evaluation of that particular option. The next slide, actually, that might, all right. So if we go back up to points four and five, transportation demand management actions, the applicant has, in fact, committed to a series of recommended actions in their updated traffic report. They include designating a TDM coordinator to disseminate information on available public transportation services, et cetera. They are committed to an annual survey that would identify the effectiveness of TDM for the site generally, things like mode share, how many folks are actually making use of public transportation, biking, walking, carpooling, and a commitment to tailoring or adjusting those TDM actions so that there's an effective plan in place that minimizes the dependence on automobile. They've identified bicycle accommodations, as I mentioned earlier. They will be posting and disseminating transit schedules. They've identified an appropriate loading management and tenant movement process. What they haven't done and are not yet committing to are other additional recommended actions, for instance, a transit subsidy, perhaps for the first month of residency, to entice tenants to potentially use or try public transportation and make them more aware of how it functions. And also, although it's not listed as a bullet item here, clarification of whether or not the parking on the site will be unbundled, in other words, will there be a separate price structure for parking, available parking, separate from the lease of the actual physical residential unit? So unbundled parking, which is quite often applied in cases like this to reduce the dependency on automobile. Finally, monitoring program. I think inherently, the TDM program, which itself calls for annual surveys, becomes part of a monitoring program. The applicant is not committing in their recent resubmital to do any monitoring beyond the annual survey for TDM. We think it's important to take a look back to see how the driveways are actually performing, not only from a capacity standpoint, but more practically and importantly, from a safety perspective, to ensure that if there are issues post-opening, that those issues be identified, flagged, and resolved in coordination with the town. So for instance, if monitoring post-occupancy indicates an issue with controlling left turn exits on the Waverly Street and that has a crash trend associated with it, a countermeasure would be appropriate to either more physically restrict the movement or monitor and enforce that particular restriction more aggressively. So we believe that a monitoring program post-occupancy, which is common to projects like this, is appropriate in this case, and that it would really put a true face on the actual operations and the actual safety characteristics of the use. So we're still advocating for that component. With that, I am glad to answer any specific questions that the board might have, and we look forward to continued discussions with the engineer and the applicant.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Micho. What we're going to do is we're going to open it to the board to ask questions. the board to ask questions of the applicant or Mr. Micho, and then we'll open it up to a public for public comment on the issues that we've heard tonight. I would just direct your attention to the fact that there obviously is going to be at least one more meeting when we deal with traffic issues, once Mr. Micho is able to issue his full written report. And there will be an opportunity to ask questions at that time as well. All of that being said, I'll turn to my fellow board members who are on Zoom and starting with Brian. Do you have any questions of either party at this point?
I'm in a class at this time, Phil.
Okay. Stu, how about you?
Okay, I have several questions. I want to get just a clarification. The entrance on Waverly Street, naturally, those folks that are going eastbound will be able to enter. What about people coming from the eastbound to, or going westbound? Will they be able to make a left turn on Waverly Street to enter the facility?
The short answer is yes. We actually asked the applicant to conduct a left turn warrants analysis to ensure that left turn movements, if they were to occur, didn't require a separate lane, which in turn would require a widening of the roadway. The warrants analysis indicates that a left, a separate left turn lane is not warranted, that left turns are feasible without impeding westbound traffic flow. So left turns will be allowed upon return from the east.
Okay. And to amplify that, for the Union Street entrance and exit, will people be able to exit onto Union Street and make a left turn?
The East Union Street driveway, the one that's opposite the high school, is being designed as a full access driveway. So you can make left or right turns from either direction of East Union, and you can make either a left or a right turn from the site itself.
And your proposed entrance way on further up Union Street, will you be able to make a left turn from that proposed situation?
That is correct. And again, this is the first time that the applicant has seen these materials, so we're going to be engaging in a conversation with them to ensure that the grading of the driveway can adequately meet safety criteria, which is the sightlines that I just described. But it will be a full access driveway as currently envisioned.
Okay, and I just want to clarify, those people that are going eastbound on Union Street will be able to make a left into the facility, and those people exiting the facility will be able to make a left from that proposed new entrance.
That is, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. No further questions?
I'm sorry, thank you, Stu. Brian, any questions?
No, no questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. And I'm going to withhold my questions until, for the current time, until our next meeting. Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Sir, if you want to step down, and again, if you're online and you want to talk, raise your hands. And we're going to allow two minutes per person, and conversation and comments have to be limited to what we've talked about tonight. We're not going to go off on a different pathway.
And of course, I'd love to, but I won't. I'll stick to the talk. And I apologize for if I repeat anything that might have been discussed at earlier meetings. I was unable to get to earlier meetings. I did send you folks a letter of some of my concerns as well. And I know tonight we're just doing the traffic. And I, my name is Jean Marker. I live at 123 Waverly Street, and I am not a traffic expert, but I am a person that has lived there for 60 years. And I know what the traffic is like at different times of the day and different seasons as well. When there is melting snow, the water comes down through the ledge. And when there's freezing temperatures, that whole entire strip of Waverly Street for quite as many yards in either direction, plus across the roadway, is there. And people that are coming around that curve are not going slowly usually. They're usually moving along. And all of a sudden, they hit that ice. And sometimes there are some signs that this DPW has put out for warning, but that is a regularly occurring thing yearly during those particular seasons. Let's see. During normal travel times, the speed of trucks and automobiles is excessive along that road. And believe me, I know it. And the thing is, it's, some people think it's a speedway, okay? The traffic, a study issued include morning and evening periods during commuter times. I have had to wait to get out of my driveway five minutes or more to exit because of the traffic is so heavy during these periods. The Hindu temple has a number of very big events every year where traffic is backed up to La Quintina in Framingham, and as far as the public safety building or further in Ashland. I have had to call police to come and clear the deadlock so my family or myself could get into my house. Let's see. And the Hindu temple also has not necessarily the big huge events like that, but they have regular, regular ongoing events, a very active church. And there, and most weekends, there are, there's a reasonable amount of traffic going in there. So that is something that's not just a thing. Another thing, Waverly Street is not a very wide street. And I heard a comment, a suggestion of putting that, some kind of a thing in the middle of the road to kind of discourage people. That road is not certainly wide enough for that whatsoever.
Ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up. I know you had submitted a written report.
Yeah, and I added some things since that's all.
That's part of the record.
Okay.
So one last item, and then we're going to have to move on.
Okay. And certainly, the high school traffic in and out, when they come in or when they go out, is certainly pretty excessive to take all of that, I believe. And my final turn would be that there is a hairpin turn from East Union Street onto Waverly Street. And I would question how, during the rush hour traffic, how that's going to be manageable. And Ashland is no Framingham. I know the contractor has done some work in Framingham. This is Ashland.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you very much. Alvaro, could you go to somebody online, and then we'll come back to you, sir. We're going to alternate as we try and do every meeting.
Richard James, I'm asking you to unmute. Please say your name and address for the record.
I thought I was going to say something else, huh?
No, I saw what you were doing.
Thank you. Rick James, 19 Tyler Lane. What will the applicants be doing for the residents of East Union Street if there is both a left and right hand turn right by the high school? There is, we already struggled to get proper crosswalks, and you are now adding in 200 and something units, which roughly 300 plus cars. A right hand turn from Union Street, I would think would make sense. It would not cause too much issues with the outbound of the high school, or from East Union onto Waverly Street with just having the right hand turn only on Waverly Street. The problem quickly becomes having people coming left hand turns on both the entry and exit ways of the high school. Either spot you select is going to cause massive traffic, which is already a problem during the school year and any event that is happening at the high school. Are there any plans to potentially create a right turn only into this area from East Union? Or are we dead set on going a full access left and right hand turn?
I would speak just to say that I think everything is still under consideration. The points that you raise are something that I think both the applicant and our peer reviewer need to take into consideration and see if there's a better solution than what perhaps is originally proposed. I see our peer reviewer making some notes, so. Does that answer your question, sir?
Hi, Paul Flaherty. I'm the owner at 63 Waverly Street.
Good to see you again.
And with the new proposal of changing the driveway exiting to the right with an island in between, that takes it very close to our driveway. And I think just between traffic coming from Framingham trying to turn left, and the distance of that new exit is going to make it awfully difficult for us to get either in or out of the driveway. No, it's, you can, well, you can't really quite see it on there, but it's quite close. Our driveway is really right on the, right at the property line. So I'm opposed to that. I'd just as soon have it stay the way that it was. But, and also, the subject of a left hand turn lane seems to me that that would be a good idea, because the traffic will be backing up there. I don't see how we'll even be able to get in and out of our driveway at high traffic times. Now, you say that it's not necessary, but if you lived 40 feet away from it, I think you would find that perhaps it is necessary. So I just wanted to say that about that, the changes to that exit on Waverly Street. The left hand turn lane, I think, would be a good idea, and moving that over closer to us just makes things difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Alvaro, anyone else online?
Yes, Small, I'm asking you to unmute. Please say your name and address for the record.
Hey, Doug Small, DPW director. About a month ago, the applicant, we had a peer review with that town staff, and I think, I think there have been some changes since that presentation to the town staff. Unfortunately, I don't think any of us have had a chance to, to really look at this and digest it. So I just had a few items. So, let's see, why not move? So I didn't understand why you didn't try to get access from a little further west, where the, kind of across from Ashland landscape. I didn't understand why, why the driveway is so far east. Maybe it's something to do with the contours or the ledge, but I didn't understand that. It seemed like it would have been easier to get up onto the site from, you know what I'm talking about, how if you're driving eastbound on Waverly Street, there's a dirt area to the right off the side of the road. And I thought that would have been.
The applicant's expert respond to that.
Sorry, Mr. Small, were you talking about Waverly Street?
Yeah, yep.
So you want the driveway, so specifically, if we were to, I would say, move the driveway, the driveway closer to the ledge, that would limit furthermore our sightlines?
This would have been further west, further west, closer to Ashland landscape across the street. Further west on Route 135.
Further west, again, yeah, that would be closer to the ledge.
Right. Okay, so there's, okay, so if there's no ledge east of that, the other thing I brought up during the peer review was I requested to look at a turn lane into the site if you're heading eastbound. I don't see anything on these plans reflecting that.
Yep, we did a warrant analysis for a left turn lane, and we determined that a left turn lane was not warranted. The peer reviewer, Bob, looked at that. Mr. Micho looked at that and talked about it.
I don't think he mentioned the turn lane heading eastbound. He mentioned the turn lane heading westbound.
A westbound left? Yes, that's what we discussed.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was talking about a turn lane eastbound, turn into the site.
On Waverly?
Yep, enough to stack like two or three cars or something like that to get them off, to get them off Waverly Street, which might help, which might help the Flahertys. And how, what is the distance between Mr. Flaherty's driveway and this, the proposed driveway you have here?
I don't have it in front. I would say, I can't answer that question right now.
So the other, the last thing, well, no, I have two more things. One, I see you have a, are we talking about crosswalks tonight?
They haven't been brought up.
Yeah, so there's a crosswalk on East Union Street. And the gentleman from Tyler, Tyler Lane mentioned, because we also have issues down there, but, which was a really good point. So this, this is a proposed crosswalk from the applicant. So we'll need some sort of advanced warning, right?
Correct. That is a crosswalk proposed with rectangular rapid flashing beacons.
Okay, and, and the sidewalks would be ADA compliant, obviously, in order to get in there. All right. So will that also stop the traffic when somebody hits the button?
Correct.
All right. Have you, have you looked at the, like, in the afternoon, when, when, like, the cars are parked on East Union Street that the, or, and waiting to pick up their kids? That can, it really gets pretty bad out there. And I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that, the cars that park, waiting, the queue out in the street in the afternoon, as far as your, the access in and out eastbound for, for your project. So that's all I have right now, but I was kind of hoping we had a little more time with the town personnel could digest this a little bit. I was a little surprised.
Another meeting in two weeks, and traffic is going to be something discussed at that meeting, and hopefully, that two week period will be adequate length of time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to respond to a few of the questions raised.
Okay, looks like we're done with the questions.
Okay.
There's actually this one gentleman behind you that wants to say something.
Art Johnson, 4 Roberts Road. The traffic study adjustment, I know when it was first presented, it was done in January, and then I guess they redid it a few months later, so.
Yeah, in April, we asked the applicant to go out and do spot counts to validate the January data, which they did.
Friday, just point of information, 8:30 in the morning, I waited for 42 cars to get on, to go east on Waverly Street. It's typical. They were talking about putting in a sign for no turns, or a sign to reduce speeds. I lived at Jefferson Hills for many years. There's a sign right there that says no left turn, right turn only to go onto Route 9. Everyone just goes. So there's no sidewalks on this stretch of 135, not really much of a bike lane. It's kind of a dangerous pedestrian area. So I don't know what the plans are for any sidewalks to connect with Framingham, who does have sidewalks. I know Ashland owns the road, but I don't know if this developer would be involved in any kind of sidewalk building. And just, I'm still not clear on Waverly Street. When you leave the complex, is it only a right turn? Is that what they're doing, or, okay. So there would be no left turn because there's, there'll be a sign saying no left turn?
Through, through the chair, I, just to clarify, those are the things that we're going to be having a conversation with the applicant's engineer about the intention right now that the applicant has is to restrict that turn onto Waverly to a right turn. That can, that restriction, if, if that was in fact the case, could be achieved by an alternate design that angles the driveway in a way that makes it very difficult to make a left turn. So we're aware that signs may not alone be effective. We'll be discussing that.
And, um, and this traffic study was done, we still don't have this forty-B over in Main Street complete, and Chestnut Street is not complete, so all that traffic is going to be added into the mix. So it's going to be a real deadlock, gridlock kind of thing. I just think it's too big, but that's another discussion.
Luis Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just very quickly wanted to respond to one of the questions posed by DPW Director Small regarding shifting the access driveway into the site along Waverly Street further west. That is something that we looked at very early on. In fact, the prior design for the site had an entrance that was further west along Waverly Street. The, the main obstacle to shifting that driveway west is that the site really slopes up significantly as you continue along Waverly Street. And so in order to minimize the amount of retaining wall and the amount of site work, you really want to follow that grade along Waverly Street as far as you can so that when you enter the site, you're already entering the site at an elevation where you can get to the building, sort of the finished floor elevation for the site. Shifting that entrance to the west would require filling in essentially that entire side of the site because you'd have to build up, if you will, in order to create a developable pad. So that, that's one of the first things that we looked at, and I just wanted to make sure that we communicated that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Why don't you stay at the microphone? Because that sort of completes what we were going, intended to accomplish tonight with addressing some of the, the traffic issues. And I wanted to just schedule our next meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for June tenth. And by that time, hopefully, we will have a written peer review, a response, and you'll have had an opportunity to meet with, with your people and talk about that. And we can come in and perhaps have, if not a final discussion on traffic, then move the subject along a great deal. So I just want to make sure that you people are going to be available on June tenth.
Yes, we will be.
Well, I'd say it's two weeks enough.
My, my job's a lot easier than the applicant's job, so I, I'll defer to the applicant as to whether they feel comfortable with that. But I think.
And the meeting after that would be June twenty-fourth.
I think we're comfortable with that. I think we've addressed the lion's share of the comments provided. I think the, the comments that were articulated this evening are ones that we're certainly interested in, in continuing the dialogue on and finding a solution for, and I think we can do that within the allotted amount of time.
Fine, and if obviously circumstances are such that we're not going to be ready on June tenth, then a request to reschedule to the next meeting after that, I'm sure would be accepted by the board. So, but let's focus on June tenth. I'd like to keep the process moving forward if we can.
Uh, that, that would be amenable to that, and to the extent that we can also tackle some of the civil.
Engineering aspect of it as well, we're expecting to be able to do so. We can do two things, start the engineering aspect of it and bring traffic further along to a conclusion. You're good for the, uh?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to participate remotely, but that's, that's okay.
Very good. Then I think we.
Thank you.
Need a motion to continue the hearing until June tenth, don't we, Elvaro? If someone wished to make a motion to continue the hearing until June tenth, twenty-twenty-five, at seven PM.
So moved.
There a second?
Seconded.
I, John Tefethan, vote in favor.
I, Brian Forrestall, vote in favor.
I, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
I, Stuart Siegel, also vote in favor.
Excellent, thank you very much. That concludes this item for the evening. Thank you, gentlemen. And moving on, you're going to stay just for the very beginning? Okay. Count us down to five, and we'll come back from our recess. Street, our forty-B comprehensive permit. The Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals will reopen the public hearing to hear the petition from SLV Ashland LLC requesting a comprehensive permit per MGL Chapter forty-B, Sections twenty dash twenty-three, to allow for the development of two multifamily-story buildings for two-hundred-and-fifty apartment units and three-hundred-and-thirty-seven concealed podium parking spaces. The applicant also proposed to restore and convert the northernmost mill's seventy-five-hundred square feet into commercial and retail space, some of it open to the public. The property in question is located at ten dash sixty Main Street, assesses map fourteen, lot one-twenty-eight, in the Ashland Overlay Downtown District A, parenthesis ADD dash A, close parenthesis, and industrial base zoning. This, uh, hearing has been the subject at public meetings starting on January seventh, twenty-twenty-five, and as recently as May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five. At that meeting, we discussed with the applicant that we were going to, uh, address landscaping at tonight's meeting. Before we do that, I want to clarify something that came up at our last meeting on May thirteenth. One of our members, Stuart Siegel, had asked a question which caught me somewhat by surprise, and I didn't fully understand to whom he was directing the question and what the question was about, so that it ended up not going to the, uh, our peer review traffic engineer, who was not Mr. Micho, but someone from his office filling in at that evening, and ended up being answered by the applicant, and that was not the intention. So, uh, all that being said, I'm going to just ask the question that Stu asked and see if we can get an answer to, just clarify the record. Mr. Micho, the question came up with respect to your initial January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five peer review report under comment seven, when you were noting the difficulties that would, uh, come up on Main Street with traffic exiting the property onto, uh, onto Main Street, particularly at peak hours, and that left turns would be particularly difficult. And you said in comment seven, ideally relocating the Main Street site driveway opposite Pleasant Street for signal control would address these issues. And you went on to say that the proponent should therefore evaluate this potential solution as well as driveway alternatives. Subsequent to that, the, um, applicant addressed a letter to the ZBA identifying items that it indicated what reasons why it was not able to do what you had suggested. And Mr. Siegel's question was, do you still stand by what you wrote in comment seven that ideally relocating the Main Street site driveway opposite Pleasant Street for signal control would address some of the issues that we were facing?
Thank you, Chair. Again, for the record, Robert Micho, Managing Principal of MDM Transportation Consultants. The, the answer to that is that we certainly stand by our original comment, but I, the context of that comment is important to understand. I specifically used the word ideal, ideally. The location of a driveway should be located opposite Pleasant Street. That's, that's good planning. Consolidation of access points to controlled locations where fee, where feasible is the ideal. There are, based on the applicant's responses to that comment, constraints that make it difficult to do so. I'm simply parroting back the gist of what the applicants have submitted as a response. In the absence of providing a driveway as part of the signal, it's been the challenge to identify controls and/or restrictions of the driveways, both on Main Street and on Myrtle Street, that would ensure that those driveways meet applicable safety-based criteria, and that they minimize the impact to travel on both of those roadways. So our subsequent commentary really related to what we were left with on the site plan, and that is a unsignaled driveway on Main Street and an unsignalled driveway on Myrtle Street. Those are essentially existing today in, in different form. And the outcome of the commentary and the applicant responses to date have been modification of the access so that, first and foremost, they meet the applicable safety-based sightline criteria. That's job one. And secondly, in, in, particularly in the case of Main Street, that there are appropriate controls in place that restrict left turn movements either into or out of the, of the development at that location. So what, what is before us now is the outcome of a, a long process of back and forth with the applicant and their engineers to identify an access plan that meets those operating and safety-based standards. So yes, we stand by our original commentary. Would it be better or best to have an access driveway located opposite Pleasant Street and integrated as part of the signal? The answer is yes, certainly. But there are constraints and impacts to the property itself that the applicant has opined to this board that don't make that possible. I, I, I think the solution, if it were feasible, if it were possible, would be great, but we're left with what we have before us now, which is the two driveways that have been significantly redesigned to achieve those two objectives, safety-based and operations.
Thank you. Okay, then let's move on to what we are here for, which is landscaping.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Jeff Engler from SELV Ashland. I'm a principal in this entity and the applicant for this application. As the chairman correctly summarized, what we'd like to do tonight is to provide a brief overview of the landscaping of the project and some of the considerations for the board's pleasure. Would also like to touch upon briefly, while we have Mr. Micho here as well, and, and also Hancock Associates. A question was raised to us at the last hearing after we thought it had been a closed issue relative to the sightline discussion on Myrtle Street, and after we had redesigned that intersection. intersection, being able to provide some additional sight distance, which we did, Hancock, in a, in a, with all due respect, in a fairly innocuous way, kind of said, well, you know, can't you look at it again? It's our understanding that we understand compensatory storage is one of the limiting factors, but from our quick analysis, it seems like you can do that. So we've drilled into that, and I don't want to lead with that, and I will get to it at the end, but I think it is important to, as we think about the landscape plan that's going to be presented to you, we think we can do the additional sight distance, but at great degradation to the public plaza and the street trees that are along Main Street and proposed. And we think it would be misguided for the board to ask us or to recommend we do as much, when your own traffic peer review consultant and our traffic peer review consultant has opined that, as designed currently, we meet all applicable safety standards. So we'll get into that later, but we will be showing how, were we to increase the sight distance beyond what we're currently showing, how it will negatively impact both the public plaza, which is something that the town and the Board of Selectmen asked us to provide even prior to this application, as well as the just generic beautification along Main Street, and our ability to do plantings along that corridor that will need to be kind of revisited because some of the trees we're proposing would need to be removed. So with that said, what I'd like to do, I'm joined tonight by Brendan Carey, our landscape architect from Bowler, as well as Chris Lucas from Lucas Environmental, and I'd like to turn it over to Brendan, just to walk through the landscaping plan and the, and the public plaza. Alvaro, how do we get this up on the screen?
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Once again, my name is Brendan Carey. I'm a landscape architect at Bowler, and this is our rendered landscape plan that we'd kind of like to share tonight. Like to highlight a couple, you know, overall themes and key areas. First one being the streetscape. We're really trying to create a strong landscape edge to the downtown, a tree-lined street, more landscaping, large canopy trees that'll grow, you know, sixty feet tall and provide a canopy, using mixed forms, species, for different colors and textures and sizes, similar to the new street trees planted in the downtown improvement projects a few years ago. So continuing on that, that palette that established, using lawn and planting beds along the whole street, reducing a lot of the asphalt and, you know, expansive parking along the street, and kind of tucking that away off the street. The street trees will grow to kind of give pedestrian scale to the street and sidewalk and highlight the, or, you know, maybe take, take away from the visual height of the building over time, and really provide like a nice tree-lined street gateway to downtown. Again, we're pulling the asphalt and parking vehicular movements away from Main Street and creating a safer sidewalk for pedestrians. Overall, just really trying to improve on the downtown streetscape. Second area is the public amenity space, kind of set on the lower level. Really, it's, it's a pocket park, kind of building upon the success of the Corner Spot and other downtown businesses that have opened up, you know, outdoor dining, social patio plaza, you know, fire pit and lawn space for games and seating and, you know, comfortable planted edge. And really, you know, when you're coming down Myrtle Street, it's kind of little pocket park gateway that kind of pops up out of nowhere and creates a gateway for the downtown. Outdoor, Alvaro, can you flip this slide? So yeah, this is kind of like enlargement, you know, fire pit, there's opportunities for food trucks, restaurant dining, lighting, fun seating, and just a programmable space for the public. And then, you know, in the back, flip back, I'm sorry, if you can go back to site plan, just the back of site, really just clean up all the trash. Any disturbed areas, landscape would be harder to see with native restoration mix, grasses and shrubs, and just trees where we can place them in the parking lot. And that's really the overview.
I would be happy to answer any questions on that quick overview. Alvaro, if you can go to the third slide. This slide represents something actually our friends at Hancock Associates provided to us, and it basically shows how we can achieve additional sight distance on the Myrtle Street exit, but as you'll notice, the green represents the area of the public plaza that will need to be eliminated. And if you follow the red line out to Main Street, the area between the red line and the gray shaded area was planted, also with street trees, and all of those would need to be removed as well. So the public plaza in its current form basically goes away, were we to provide the additional sight distance, because we need to provide the necessary compensatory storage. That's non-negotiable, as it is, in order to meet that, and I don't want to defer this into a detailed analysis, but this will be part of the analysis that we provide to the Conservation Commission. We're going to have to set the building about an inch or two lower than what's represented now, to provide the additional compensatory storage, just to meet the needs that are going to be required. So in order to provide the additional sight distance, those compensatory storage considerations also come into play, and as shown, that's what would the impact be to the public plaza. So we would, we state for the record, can we do it? Yes, we can do it. Do we think it's a good idea? No, we do not, and we think it would really be to the detriment of the overall outdoor amenity space, as well as the street trees. Alvaro, could you, I'm sorry, could you go back to the first slide? So effectively, the last three or four street trees shown there, I guess maybe the last three, those would all be eliminated as part of that plan. So that's not something we need to discuss tonight, I just wanted to introduce it. Hancock Associates asked us to provide some of the supporting analysis, which we're going to be doing. It's not going to be the, you know, fat, detailed submission that we're going to be providing to the Conservation Commission when we submit for the NOI, but it'll be enough for Robert or Joe to look at it and say, yeah, I kind of understand what the compensatory storage considerations are. So we'll be doing that, we'll provide it in the next week or so. So with that said, happy to answer any questions on the landscaping plan.
As I said with the microphone off, why don't we start with questions from board members? So Brian, any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Stu, questions?
No questions.
Okay, and Ryan?
No questions at this time either.
My only question is the, the height of the shrubs and the, and the trees. Obviously, we've worked very hard to get the proper sight, sightlines. Are these, where some of these are, trees are located, are they going to interfere, especially looking at the, sort of the interim parking lot in the front of the building on, on Main Street, where temporary parking and deliveries are going to come, come in and out? It looks like the trees could potentially be in sightline problem.
We kept everything out of the, the approved sightlines that we're working off of, but there's room for adjustments if, if there was any conflict, but no, we're all set with, with the height of the shrubs and the trees and their, their stems and trunks.
Okay. And about maintaining the landscaping, they have a tendency to die in Ashland, unfortunately, as my yard can test. What are the plans for ongoing maintenance of the plan of the landscaping?
The ongo, no, excuse me, the ongoing maintenance would be exclusively our responsibility. All these plantings are on our property, so if something dies, you know, we'll need to replace that. I mean, that's, particularly on Main Street, that's the front door, front of our building, so we have every incentive to make sure it looks nice.
I don't have any further questions at this time. Members of the public, anyone that has a question about landscaping, if you want to step up or raise your hand? And here comes one of our people who knows the drill, name and address, please.
Art Johnson, Four Roberts Road. I think, based on the, when that police officer was here a few meetings ago, saying that that intersection is, or that Myrtle Street curve there is so dangerous, I think the sightlines losing a couple of trees is better than, you know, possible accidents happening there, because, you know, you can't see around the corners and the car, he says the cars are coming down this road at forty-seven miles an hour. So I think, I like that landscape alternative, you know, I think shrubs, lower shrubs, you know, keep the park. I think that's.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online that seems to indicate it?
Amanda, I'm asking you to unmute, name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Amanda Walsh, Pine Hill Road. I really like these plans, I just wanted to tell the developer and everyone involved, great job on them. The one question that I did have to develop, for the developer, is if they would consider putting a Riverwalk in. I know the town has put a lot of effort and time into the park across the street, and I think it'd be a really nice enhancement, not only for the residents, but also for the town. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mark?
Thank you. Good evening, Mark, forty-one, nineteen Main Street. With the front trees that's going to be lined up, what's the sidewalk distance on the inside of the parking lot, inside walk area with the trees? How much room is there going to be for people walking with the trees inside in the parking lot?
The landscape plan that we've been presented with doesn't seem to contain markings, but it seems as though, just from what's being drawn, there is more than adequate space to walk around in the public area, as it's presently designed, and also in the, in the parking lot.
Okay, and in the corner, the pocket park area, that's going to be landscape too, but what else is going to be put in to keep it up for the year?
Well, that's something that we haven't discussed with them as yet, as, as far, as far as that, but what they've described, and that perhaps is subject to change, depending upon what the board decides it might want to do with the sightline proposal change, was an open, sort of an open area park. There's a diagram that was also submitted that shows a number of potential options with tables and chairs put out there, et cetera.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Okay. Now, to look at it, is, let's see, in this, in the circle picture, it shows what could be a food truck fountain and stuff like that. What else, can there be more wider screen, wider green spots?
I'm sorry, can there be what?
Wider green. There could be like more, more square than, than one, two, three, four, five, six circles, and be more of a green spot. And the idea had pointed on fountain, that would be a good idea. But that, these are, what's in the circles pictures is not on the landscape plan, correct?
No, they are.
They are.
The circled areas on this plan are on the landscape plan that I have.
Yeah, I suppose this gave us. So I'm, I'm hoping that it could be more like a small retail spots with break, with break areas instead of foods, that we get a little more business looking than just going by, and where a fountain would be, like I said, that'd be a good, a good attraction, especially in the spring, summer. There's two circles on the right side, actually all three circles on the right side. I'm not, I'm not a restaurant, I'm not a restaurant fan, so I'm figuring more business offices and stuff like that. But yeah, for the, for the inside of the big circle with the corners, corner, pocket park, I think a little more square, be more green, maybe more appealing outside for more people to be outside too, other than the amenities that will be coming to, to the spot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Anyone else, Alvaro?
No, not online.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I would, if I could just respond to Amanda's question, she's always so cheerful and nice, I would be remiss not to. We looked at doing a walking trail, and it would be something we would like to do, but that area of the site is, it's flood plain, it's resource area, it's riverfront, lots of things that preclude us from doing as much, and would, would, would not be well-received were we to try to create one in that area. So for all those reasons, it, it's just untenable for us to do that. We definitely wanted to do it and looked at it, but we, we can't for all those reasons. I wish we could. Which ties me to one other thing, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to address really briefly. We received a letter from Conservation a week or a week and a half ago.
That's where we were going next.
Do you want to go before me, or do you want to?
Well, yeah, why don't I, I set the, set the stage so people know what we're talking about. We've been going back and forth with you for a number of meetings about when you're going to file with the Conservation Commission about what you're going to need, your notice of intent, and stormwater approval, et cetera, et cetera. And you've explained very consistently the why you're not doing that now, and what your intent is, and that's sort of where, where we stand. And then there was a letter that came from three members of the Conservation Commission, basically sort of outlining their concerns about the information the ZBA is being given in order to make a decision as to whether to grant a comprehensive permit or not, recognizing that the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over state laws, but the ZBA has jurisdiction over the local Ashland bylaws. And you responded very promptly with something that perhaps clarified the issue or didn't clarify the issue. And I guess from a perspective of the ZBA, we recognize- we recognize that the CONCOM doesn't have jurisdiction over the local Ashland wetlands and stormwater laws. But the ZBA, as part of this comprehensive permit, does. And I note in your initial application and waivers, you basically blew off the ZBA's right to waive or not waive local Ashland bylaws on this issue. And the three members of the CONCOM were concerned that we weren't, we as the ZBA, weren't being given enough information to adequately make a decision whether we will, we should waive the local bylaws or not. And that's where I think their concern came from. And obviously, we rely a great deal in general terms, in general cases, with the Conservation Commission to deal with conservation issues. The ZBA doesn't typically deal with that. So we're looking for guidance from all sources. And, you know, I have thought about inviting members of the CONCOM to come before the committee and speak to give us their thoughts and advice on the local ordinance in order for us to make a decision, just as we've asked the planning board and any number of other local agencies to do. And they have done that. And the Conservation Commission did right from the very beginning, although as they indicated, it's difficult for them to take a position because they didn't have any information. So I guess that's where we are. And I can understand and I understand you, your position that you don't file until you have a, basically a confirmed plan, but also understanding the decisions we have to make. And do we have adequate information in order to make a decision about a waiver?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really disagree with anything that you've said. I, I mean, I would say this. The, the only thing I would disagree with is the characterization that we blew off, you know, the local requirements. We resubmitted a pretty detailed waiver list with a specific explanation on everything we're asking for. And I feel pretty good that that stands on its own. Secondly, and let's talk about the, this, the item we just talked about relative to the site distance. If that's something the board wants, we have to change all our compensatory storage calculations and assumptions. That's something that we would be filing with the Conservation Commission. So it makes no sense to file and then go through exercises like that and then have to change things with the Conservation Commission. Respectfully, I've done hundreds of these 40Bs and it's very rare to file a notice of intent prior to having a permit. What if the board denies the project or doesn't like something else? Why would I spend months before the Conservation Commission at the same time I'm fighting an appeal with this board? It just doesn't make any logical sense. We hundred percent respect and know that the notice of intent process with Conservation Commission is going to be detailed. There is going to be discussion. We are going to have to substantiate all the engineering that we've put before the board. We get that. My only point is, we need to be a little bit patient, let this process play out, and then we're going to go with the Conservation Commission. We have Hancock and Associates on the record, Mr. Piznola, at multiple hearings saying, yes, I don't have all the detailed calc's, but I've reviewed enough to feel comfortable that this project can meet all applicable engineering standards and regulations. And he's on the record as saying that. So he is, that's not us. They're responsible to the board. Hancock Associates is a really good engineering firm and they've reviewed all our detailed submissions and, and said, you know what? You're going to have to substantiate it to the Conservation Commission. But what we've seen to date, we feel comfortable that the concept and the strategy that you're employing is going to work and is achievable. So that's where we're at. We look forward to filing with the Conservation Commission and we'll talk to, you know, the waivers when we get towards the end of the process. But we're just doing everything in a kind of logical, sequential manner, like many, many other projects that I've been involved with. So, I mean, Chris Lucas is, is, who the town knows well, has been through this process many, many times. And we feel comfortable with him representing us before Conservation and, and spearheading that process. So with that said, we can answer any questions, but I don't think the overall kind of strategy or approach has changed. I think we've done a ton of work to make Hancock Associates comfortable with our engineering, not to mention Mr. Mishaw and his team and Haley Ward. They're, they're doing their thing. So I think we've done a lot. We have more to do and we're going to do that in due time. But that, 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 I, I just wanted to reiterate something that I felt like I said, you know, last month. But that letter kind of like was making aspersions, like we were being cavalier or delaying or hiding. And I would reject that characterization, that's all.
Questions for members of the board. Brian, any questions?
No, no.
And Stu, questions?
Mr. Chairman, can, can the board defer any decisions until we hear from the CONCOM?
The answer is no. We're going to have public comment after, after the board asks questions. And if anybody speaks from the CONCOM individually and not on behalf of the CONCOM, I don't know, but it's our decision on the local, the local bylaws that it's the ZBA's decision that holds on that. That doesn't go before the CONCOM, just the state wetlands and stormwater management.
I understand that, but can we defer making our decision until we actually hear the findings of the CONCOM Committee?
I don't believe so. Counsel is shaking his head, no.
No, Mr. Chairman, I can clarify that. You're under a specific statutory clock with respect to the comprehensive permit. If the wetla- if the Conservation Commission doesn't get a filing, they don't even get a chance to begin their process. And as we just heard, that doesn't sound like it will even initiate until after this proceeding is finished, or at least, I think that's what the representation was. So you may get comments back from your peer reviewers and even from commission members. And it sounds like you've already gotten one letter. So you can ask for information and you can collect and request more information if your peer reviewers think that's appropriate. But you're not going to get a commission vote on, on any NOI while this process is still open.
No, I didn't say a commission vote. I just said to listen to what the discussions were from the CONCOM Committee and then we would make our decision and they would make theirs.
The answer against you is no.
Okay.
Any further questions on this?
None am I.
Permit?
Sorry.
No, from you, Stu.
No.
Okay. Ryan, any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Okay, I have no questions after I already spoke. Open the matter up for public comment from any members of the public who wish to be heard.
Okay, again, Mark, 4119 Main Street. I'm going to try a different approach.
As long as that approach is brief.
Will be brief, it'll be to a point.
Thank you.
When this board is done completely and the vote was taken, the decision was made on the landscaping only, is there a possible way of emailing the CONCOM and getting, telling what was voted here? And ask for their opinion back?
No.
Why?
Open meeting law. And it's the, under the comprehensive permit law, the local ordinances bylaws regarding stormwater, wetlands are solely the responsibility of the zoning board of appeals to decide.
Mr. Chairman, may I just offer a clarification? But you do solicit comments from staff, boards and committees.
We have and we've received comments.
Stormwater is under ZBA?
Under the comprehensive permit law of Chapter 40B, all local ordinances come before the responsi- or the responsibility of the zoning board of appeals. It's just state law that stays with any other entity and conservation laws would be with the Conservation Commission.
So this is going to be saying that no matter what, if Conservation gets in touch with the zoning board people with their idea without you, without them, could there be an answer back to them if they reach out first?
Not without a violation of the local meeting law.
But I'm just saying.
About the open meeting law, excuse me.
I'm just saying, if the members on their own time, on their own email, send a letter out.
Any, any individual can file a letter or a statement of support or a statement of opposition to the planning department, to the zoning board of appeals. It gets entered into the record and it's something that the ZBA will ultimately consider, just as we consider all public comments that are made here at our meetings and any written comments that are submitted in between meetings.
Okay, so I'll, I'll wait, use my patience and wait until this, when they, the advocate bring themselves in front of the CONCOM group. And when they bring this up on their agenda, then it'll be brought up with the, the talkover with them when they bring it up.
There are certainly issues that they are going to have to face with the CONCOM and a site that is a, has been conceded by everybody to be a difficult site.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wish to be heard?
There's one person online.
Why don't we do the person that's here in person and then we can go to the person online?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Gene Crouch, 111 Green Street. I'm a member of the Conservation Commission and was part of the author that wrote the letter to you. I want to take exception to the comment made by the developer where he said that your peer reviewer has determined that the project completely meets all standards and specifications. The reason we wrote that letter was at the last meeting, the peer reviewer deferred all comments on the stormwater and flood plain to the CONCOM, saying, well, there's more detail that's needed and I'll leave that to the CONCOM to figure out. That's why we wrote that letter. So the peer reviewer has not reviewed the entire project. You do not have all the information available to you to render a decision at this time. Regarding us and being able to review it, we can only review it if we have an NOI in front of us. We cannot meet and provide comments to you outside of a public meeting process if it's going to have any bearing on a, on a permit, that decision that we're going to be engaged in. So that's just all I wanted to say, just to clear the record and.
What additional information does the ZBA need?
How does the system work? Where is the stormor- the flood plain compensation? How is that, is it going to lose flood storage volume? Is it going to gain it? I, I've not seen any record of that or any information relative to that. And apparently neither has the peer reviewer because he's deferred all those kinds of issues back to the CONCOM and through the NOI process, which is why we have asked them through you to have them file a notice of intent so we can start that process and then let everybody know what we're thinking. Because we would hold all those meetings in a public meeting just like this.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Crouch. You get an opportunity. Anybody else in the public wish to be, we do have one person apparently online?
Yes. Joan, I'm asking you to unmute. Name and address for the record, please.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Joan Gufford, 1 Shore Road. I'm on the historical commission but speaking as an individual. I have a few questions. I'm trying to understand this process and trying to understand how far into the process we are and whether we are pushing back on, on the waivers that have been requested or when that happens, whether conditions are created and how that, how that process works. If someone could give me just a quick, quick synopsis of, of when that, when those waivers get decided on?
That will be decided later in the process. We're nowhere near ruling on those yet.
Okay, so how does, how does the 180 days work? Every time it has to go to peer review, does that push out the 180 days?
It doesn't, but there have been agreements that, between the parties, to extend the time. I believe the most recent one extends the time to a date in July. I would anticipate July 20th. I would anticipate that there may well need to be a request and an agreement by the parties to extend the process even further. But we're going to wait and see how things are moving and whether that's necessary or not. But it behooves everybody to extend the hearing to a point where we can adequately address all of the issues and decide whether to grant the comprehensive permit or not.
And I have a question for legal. I'm just, I'm wondering if a task force could be created. I'm hearing that, that you would, I think the ZBA would like some input from the CONCOM and from the P, um, planning board, et cetera. And I'm wondering if a task force could be created to have some of those discussions in, in a meeting separate from the ZBA meeting that wouldn't, wouldn't impinge on the open meeting law because it would only be one person from each committee type of thing, if that would be able to happen?
There's not going to be another committee created to discuss issues involving the comprehensive permit that's before the ZBA.
Is there a reason why? It would give you a cha- wouldn't it give you a chance?
Yes, the process is well on its way. And there's been peer review and we're dealing with, we're dealing with the issues. We're not going to create a committee that's going to have conversations without any legal responsibility to be created.
Well, as, as an, as an individual in the town, I am very, very concerned about this, about this development and the, the scope of this development. And I think that we should put every single resource we can from the town towards making it the best development for the town. And that, that is my, is my stand and I really hope that you will take it under consideration. Thank you.
Anything else? Any other comments?
No, I think that's it, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just two quick things. One, if it, if it pleases the CONCOM, we would be willing to go informally prior to an NOI to a public hearing and answer questions or see what their concerns are and, and do that prior. What's the right adjective? Just confused or surprised by the members assertion that we have not, we've, how many hours have we spent talking about stormwater? Have they not seen the Hancock Associates peer review letter? That was 25 pages, like 14 of which dealt with stormwater and a lot dealt with compensatory storage? All of the things that we're going to be talking about with them. So some representation that it hasn't been talked about or nobody's looked at it, I, I think the board would agree is grossly inaccurate. I know, I don't want to speak for Hancock and Associates, but I know they've spent a lot of, a hell of a lot of time and, and our money reviewing all of those things. So if, if I heard from Hancock and Associates, we have a lot of problems with stormwater and the compensatory storage doesn't work and this, that and the other relative to the resource areas, would still be having that conversation because I would not feel comfortable moving forward in the process. Conversely, we've heard from them that, yes, there's still some additional information that needs to be provided, but based on everything we've seen today, we think strategically and conceptually. we think strategically and conceptually, the plan works. So with that said, I would be happy to bring Chris and Bowler and meet with the Conservation Commission informally prior to an NOI to hear their concerns so that we may answer questions. Maybe we can, you know, assuage some of those concerns because it has, they're not aware of what the conversation here has been. And we would be willing to do that if it helps the process. But I think we've all, the town included, and this board and its peer review consultants have spent many, many hours on behalf of the town making sure that those issues have, have been covered.
Well, the engineer who wrote the peer review report is not here this evening, so I don't want to get involved in what he meant or didn't mean when he wrote the reports that he wrote. I don't think that's productive for any of us. We're done for this issue tonight, I think. We need to discuss where we go on June 10th, what's next on the agenda. Elvaro, are we going to have our Haley and Ward peer review report ready by June 10th?
They have requested some extra information that we have passed it down to the applicant. So once received, we can pass it down again to Haley Ward.
I think we submitted all of it.
There was some extra comments that were requested, I think. I forwarded that information last Thursday.
Yeah, we submitted, we submitted a formal letter. It was like four or five pages of all answers to those questions. I'll submit it again tomorrow, but yeah.
Maybe we'll submit it to them, maybe not to me, so that's why I'm not.
All right, well, regardless, yeah, we got Haley and Ward submitted a bunch of questions. We submitted answers to that. We'll make sure you get that. And then, Mr. Chairman, we will have a signage, a plan for you guys in advance of that. So really, we'll wait for Haley and Ward's letter and then the signage plan. And then also, what we'll do is we'll submit the updated compensatory storage analysis to Hancock and Associates, really just so they can assert that, okay, we understand what's going on and yes, in order to provide, you know, the necessary compensatory storage, the plan represented is, you know, accurate, and the, the public space and other areas will need to be decreased as shown on the plan. So we'll, we'll get that to Hancock as well.
So on June 10th, we'll talk about Haley and Ward's peer review. We'll talk about the.
Signage.
Signage. Thank you, Elvaro. And I'd like to talk some more about landscaping after we have an opportunity to review the plans that were presented today. They're a little different. And also to consider the issue of cutting the park area out to enable sightlines because obviously, as one of our commenters commented, public safety is a priority over public parks. So we need to make a decision upon that. That's all. So June 10th, we're good?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
And to my fellow board members, is there a motion to continue the hearing till Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, at 7:00 PM?
So moved.
And is there a second? Excellent. Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrest, I'll vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, also vote in favor.
Thank you. That concludes the public hearing for this evening. And moving on to the next item on the agenda. And thank you, peer reviewers. Thank you for staying. The letter for the proposed 40B project at 55 West Union Street. At our last meeting, we had discussed what we wished to express our concerns, if any, to the select board. And that has been, Elvaro put our comments together and drafted a letter. The deadline for the submission to the housing agency is tomorrow, so we need to finalize this tonight. Elvaro, did you get any proposed changes to the letter from what you sent out to everybody?
I have not received any comments.
Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns, proposed changes about the letter before we vote on it and to have it sent to town manager and select board to forward to the housing agency?
I don't.
Okay. I think we need a vote. Then do I hear a motion to approve forwarding the letter? And I'm missing the date of the letter at the moment.
It has the date of May 20th.
May 20th, 2025. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor.
Aye, Brian Forrest, I'll vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Thank you, Stu. Okay, moving on to item number six on the agenda, meeting minutes. We have three meetings to consider. First is April 22nd, 2025. Elvaro sent out the draft minutes last week, I believe. Did you receive any comments from those?
No comments.
Any questions about those? If not, someone wished to make a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second.
I second it.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor of the April 22nd, 2025 minutes.
Aye, Brian Forrest, I'll vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel. Go ahead, Ryan.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
We used to have this down perfectly. We're out of practice. Minutes for May 6, 2025. Elvaro, any proposed changes submitted?
To the May 6th? No.
Okay. Is there any questions, comments, proposed changes from any board members?
No.
If not, a motion to approve the May 6, 2025 meeting minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor of the May 6, 2025 minutes.
Aye, Brian Forrest, I'll vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Thank you very much. And last but certainly not least, minutes for the May 13th, 2025 meeting. Elvaro, any proposed changes submitted?
No comments.
Okay. Any questions, concerns, proposed changes to the minutes?
No.
If not, a motion to approve the minutes for the May 13th, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor of the May 13th, 2025 minutes.
Aye, Brian Forrest, I'll vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
Aye, Stuart Siegel, vote in favor.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And my compliments to whoever prepared the minutes. They were very detailed, three separate meetings and without a, a change. So congratulations. Item number seven, staff updates and administrative matters. I am going to start. Normally, I turn to Elvaro and ask him if there are any staff updates or administrative matters. But tonight will be Elvaro's last ZBA meeting. He will be leaving the town of Ashland in early June to pursue a graduate degree. And I want to thank him on behalf of the entire board for your hard work over the last two years and keeping us on the straight and narrow. You've been a big help, especially to me, and you will be missed.
Thank you, John. I'll miss you all as well.
Yeah, good luck, Elvaro.
Thank you, Ryan.
And any staff updates or administrative matters from you?
No, I'll be working with you to prepare for the next meeting. And then we be updating, I'll send an email update seeing who will be the, the town staff. Somebody from the town will be staffing the meeting until the new, until there's a new person staffing regularly this meeting. But I'll be helping to set up the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And last but not least, I think we need a motion to adjourn. Someone wished to make that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Aye, John Trefethan, vote in favor of adjourning.
Aye, Brian Forrest, I'll vote in favor.
Aye, Ryan Sullivan, vote in favor.
And aye, Stuart Siegel, also vote in favor.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good night's work. Good night. Waka, thank you very much.
So.